...Road 39, Mankas, Colorado, located south of Road G, east of Road 38, situated in Section 12, Township 35 North, Range 14 West, and MPM. The hearing will be held Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, at 1:00 PM in the Commissioners' Hearing Room, Monizuma County Administrative Offices, 109 West Main, Cortez, Colorado. Interested persons may attend and give input. Information may be obtained from the Planning Office, Room 270, Administrative Offices, Cortez, Colorado, or assess online at http://colins/cortes/monizumacounty.org/web/department/planning. You may also contact the Planning Department at (970) 565-2801 with questions. The file can be inspected in the Planning Department during regular office hours. Due to this 20th day of August, 2019, Kim Purcell, Clerk, Board of County Commissioners, Monizuma County, published in the Journal on Tuesday, August 13th, 2019.
Thank you, Lynn. Is Mr. Momoney in the audience?
Yes, he is.
Would you like to come up with Don, Jane?
Sure.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, Don, tell us what...
So, Mr. Momoney has applied for a special use permit. That's required per the Land Use Code. A meat processing facility is guideline as in an industrial agribusiness, so that requires a special use permit. In his application with the attachments, he's done everything he can to mitigate noise, smell, traffic. Everything's self-contained within an existing building with some additional pins built that will be inside the building as well. In review of the operation, what's planned, what's proposed, he will not exceed any threshold standards, therefore, he doesn't need to apply for a high-impact permit at this time.
How did Planning and Zoning...
They reviewed the application as well. There was lots of public comment as far as odor and noise, which everything's contained in the building, so they deemed that as being mitigated, and they voted unanimously to approve to move it forward for your consideration and approval.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Just additional information, that I believe there was a 500-head-a-year number that was discussed and agreed upon, but I'm going to say that I believe that that number should be taken off because it doesn't say anything about that in the Land Use Code, and we don't count the number of head with our other processing plants, so I think that that would cause a problem to leave that number there. It should be taken off.
Why was the restriction put on? I mean...
There was just concern on how big it might get and how large it might grow, and Mr. Momoney actually volunteered himself to put a limit on it, just because he does not foresee it exceeding that in the near future.
But what if it's sold and it does exceed that? I don't, I would agree with Commissioner Supla that to put a restriction on a business that could potentially grow, I mean, we don't restrict other businesses for growth.
That was just something that he offered up, just as a concession, because of the many comments that road and dust, traffic might get exceeded. We explained that if that was the case, if he exceeds threshold standards, then he would have to come back to the Planning and Zoning Office and apply for a high-impact permit, and that would go through the same review process.
I mean, I think that's an important point. If this business does grow, if it gets approved and grows, then likely we're talking about exceeding threshold standards, and it would require coming back.
And getting a high-impact permit. Yeah, so that, one, that would take care of any, anything given. Okay. Any other questions?
Speak up.
I'm sorry. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Not at this time. I'd like to listen to the...
All right. We'll now take this to the public comment. If anybody here wishes to address the Commissioners on this issue, please come to the podium and state your name, your address, and tell us what your concerns are.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rob Pope, 311 North Broadway. I was on the Planning Commission when this came through and was part of the process. I wanted to comment on a few things. We're pretty diligent when we review this stuff. As already stated, most of the issues have to do with traffic and particulates, dust, odor, noise, lighting, and the surrounding properties. The area that it said was, there was existing corrals there. It was already used for agricultural. The traffic, residential, there's 15 round trips a day. They won't even exceed that. That's a residential threshold. The noise, the handling of the animals is all indoors. Even when they come in, they don't even feed them there. They can only be held for a certain length of time. They're not fed, and they are, the corrals are indoors. I did two trips out there, one before the meeting and one after, to look at the concerns of some of the neighbors. I didn't see any exterior lighting. I may be wrong, but I didn't see any. The property location, the surrounding area, it fits right in with what it was. We reviewed, you talked about 500-head of cattle. The only way that I saw, and I think he should grow it as much as he wants, but the, as far as building new facilities to handle extra cattle, that would have to go through the review process. I don't know what his refrigeration capacity is for hanging beef, but if he wanted to put in a second shift and he has a refrigeration capacity, he might be able to exceed 500-head, just by putting on a second shift, if he has the refrigeration capacity to do it. I think the facility has the capacity to move the animals through there. There was a comment made that insinuated that somehow money or family relationships has something to do with this approval process. Can assure you that's not true. And it kind of minimizes comments when comments like that are made with no substantiation. You know, we're a, we're a group of guys that take our job seriously. There's none of that stuff that goes on. I personally never knew Mr. Momoney. Never met him before. So, what, and I stated this at the beginning of the meeting, back when we had the meeting, I was happy to see a processor come to the county, and that seemed to be construed as a blanket approval of it. And we were kind of called to task for saying that. Well, it's our job to have an opinion, and I stand by opinion. I'm glad somebody came in here and was going through the process to start a USDA plant. We need one. County needs one. You know, we don't like to haul our livestock across state lines. So, I just wanted you guys to be aware, we did a real thorough job checking this out. Not only has he mitigated it, but he has went above and beyond what he really needs to do. So, I applaud him in his efforts to be a first-class operator in the area, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this issue?
I live at 38294, Road G. I share a southern and part of a western property line with Mr. Momoney. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board. Mr. Momoney doesn't live in our neighborhood. He doesn't even live in the state. I commend his desire to create a productive, profitable, and diverse ranching operation. He appears to be doing a good job of following best practices within the boundaries of his property. I cannot commend his disregard for the property rights and values of his neighbors. Prior to building, he did not apply to the county for the necessary use permits, nor did he have the common courtesy to talk with his neighbors of his intentions. We are now in a situation where he's seeking retroactive approval for a new building built for the purpose of a slaughterhouse. In the permit application, it states, "The meat processing units are being placed in an existing equipment building that has been retrofitted." That's not accurate. This is a newly-built addition to a slightly older, but still-new, equipment building, which he built since purchasing the property in 2015. The septic system was installed this summer. It appears that this project is in violation of both the letter and the spirit of the Monizuma County Land Use Code, Section 2201.1, Paragraph B. I also understand the desire of Mr. Momoney and other small cattle producers to have a USDA-approved slaughterhouse in Monizuma County. Such facility, located in an industrial area, would be a boost to the local agricultural economy and a boost to the cattleman's bottom line. The desire of potential customers is not a legitimate reason to approve this project. Property rights exist on both sides of the fence, and overwhelmingly, our side of the fence does not want this slaughterhouse. We are subject to the adverse impacts on our quality of life and our property values to improve the bottom line of others. In several conversations with Mr. Momoney since this permit process was initiated, he said, "Trust me." I want to trust him. I want to believe that his facility will not have a negative impact on our neighborhood. I'm fairly confident that he has a plan to contain most of the internal processes, if all goes according to his plans. Noise is one area that I believe he is underestimating. The construction noise for the past years, while these buildings were being built, has been excessive but tolerated because there was an end point. The noise of ten or more hungry, because they're not being fed, displaced, removed from their home-herd cows 24 hours a day, every weekend, all year, is a serious adverse impact in our neighborhood. And again, for those who don't think it is, I invite you to come sleep in my bedroom once it's up and going. If you should see fit to approve this permit, we request that certain limits and practices be included. One, a limit of 500 animals per year is already agreed upon. Two, any expansion of slaughter operations would take place at some other, already-established industrial zone. Three, the ongoing noise of ten hungry, displaced, and about-to-die cattle exceeds the existing normal, that's what's before this facility is in operation, then an effective sound barrier would be constructed between the slaughterhouse and our neighboring houses to mitigate such noise. Monitor the water quality in the Mankas River below the leach field for additional pollutants, both biological and chemical. All lighting be directed downward as recommended in the Land Use Code. Direct all customers, when delivering animals, to stay on the paved roads of H and/or 39. And in the words of Ronald Reagan, "Trust, but verify." Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this? We're going to limit our timeframes to three minutes per person, so...
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to give our input and our concerns on the special use permit proposed for the slaughterhouse and meat processing facility of Mr. Momoney's...
Could you state your name and address, please?
Oh, name is Sarah Staver. Address is 7290 Road 39. We sort of met last year when I created the parcel that I want to build my home on there that is going to be impacted potentially by this. My husband and I own right there, if you remember, on Road 39, which sort of touches corners across Road 39 from the applicant's main parcel. This parcel that we're talking about is sort of enclosed, encapsulated in his larger holding. So, one thing we really wanted to make the point about is that none of us, a lot of us here are within very close distance of the property, but we weren't notified because of the, the way the notifications work, within 500 feet or something, but it does impact a lot of people. So, I would ask you to sort of look at that process and maybe for something that's sort of an industrial use like this, to expand your parameters, or at least look at who you might be affecting, because I think that would be really helpful to us, because it came as a surprise to all of us. You know, first of all, I want to make it clear that I support agriculture and the rural nature of our town. Mankas is a small area. I have many friends and neighbors that are agricultural. Many of them are here, and we historically help each other and work together on the land, on our ditches, and in contributing to keep Mankas a viable community. I guess what I'm going to ask is to ask you to give us some specifics, because the code is vague, and these specifics would help us get along neighbor to neighbor. So, there's, I'm not opposing the idea. Mr. Momoney, he doesn't live at his property. He lives at another, one of his properties in the area. He has several holdings. However, we did meet him for the first time last week, and he very graciously did a site tour with us. He seems like a good addition to the area, and his facility seemed tidy and well-constructed. He answered a lot of our questions and seemed to have a solid plan for his business, which included processing only 10 animals per week, which he said would more than service his needs. However, the possible expansion does remain a concern and was never directly addressed as to whether this may become part of a long-range plan or an additional profit source. I think you might have touched on this, but I did have a couple of questions. Does a special use permit have a duration? You know, is there a sunset on it? Does it expire? And does it run with the property if it's sold?
All right. Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Yes and yes. No, I'm not, I'm not finished yet.
Well, your three minutes are up.
I'll answer a question.
So, just to answer, the special use permit does not expire or sunset. Unless there's a condition that it'll be reviewed in a X amount of months or years or on an annual basis. It does not necessarily stay with the property. If that property is sold, then the new applicant would have to come in and apply for that special use permit in their name, under their conditions, because the conditions might change. Just because one operation worked this way, it may vary, may have different standards, exceed part of the threshold standards. We don't know until we deal with the new property owner.
And if it does expand, it will go to a high-impact permit and go through the process again.
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate that answer, because we didn't think to ask that before. I think I've been given some more time by some other people that were going to speak. So, you know, this stuff's important, and, you know, it will help us get along neighbors if we can come to some agreements here and that you also understand our position. You know, we, you know, we keep hearing this is about ag uses in the county, and we support ag uses. You know, we've supported it in Mankas. But from what I understand, in the County Land Use Code, Section 3106, and I apologize for reading, but I don't know your code by heart like you may, but it says that this use is more than any of the normal agricultural uses as defined and listed in the code. Those uses do not include slaughterhouses and meat processing facilities. That's covered in Section D as an industrial agribusiness. So, I just think we need to be clear that this just isn't regular ag. It's an industrial agribusiness. Thus, the special use permit, which by definition is for uses that have potentially greater impact than uses by right. So, the applicant's and the neighbor's rights are those that you guys get to decide here. The special use permit specifically states that such uses should not cause water pollution, excess noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare from lighting. I know you said it doesn't, it isn't above the threshold standards, but the threshold standards aren't specific. There seem to be no specific criteria for this type of use itself. And in the code, Section 1201 says, "The function of the threshold standard is to assure landowners that surrounding land uses will not exceed the established standards," which aren't there, "unless appropriate mitigation measures have been approved and applied." It also says that "development should not cause adverse effects on adjacent properties" and defining those effects as "any impact that creates an increased risk to health, safety, or welfare of the citizens of the county, a significant reduction in neighbor and property values, or unfavorable or harmful consequences." You know, I just want you to perhaps look at some of these things may exist. So, you know, I would like to request that some conditions are put on the permit, and it's not to restrict Mr. Momoney. It's really to give us predictability and give us, not to be unreasonable or onerous, but just give everyone a clear idea of what this will look like. He offered to limit it to 500 animals a year. You know, he said that more than would cover his current use. I think that was a very generous thing, and it should be considered. I also think we should consider maybe reviewing it annually or biannually, as planning said could be done, and that could be a condition. You know, as far as lighting goes, he did show us lights on the building, and that they just, it should be a condition and checked that any exterior lights would be shielded and downward-facing, and not on 24 hours a day. Noise, I think one important thing we did notice about the facility, which, as I said, was very tidy, but it's not clearly depicted, and it's been said repeatedly that it's all enclosed. The cattle pens are within, in addition to the metal building, and it, but it's open at the bottom, and for good reason. It's open for airflow, but just as that will allow air in, it will allow sound out. So, it's up about two feet on three sides, and the sides are those that are facing the adjacent neighbors. So, I think that you could get the noise, you're going to have noise resounding in a metal building from displaced stock that haven't been fed and have, or stressed out a little bit. You know, so I'd like to request some specific standards. I know that the decibel standards in the, that's the one standard that really is specifically in the code, and it's 70 decibels, but when I looked that up, that's equivalent to standing next to very loud traffic. So, if you had 70 decibels going, you know, 12 hours a day on your property line, that's a lot of noise. So, I'd like, and decibels, so if people don't know, decibels are not linear, like 60 decibels, 70 decibels. That 10 decibels is a logarithmic amount, which, which is increasing the 60 decibels tenfold, so it's not linear like we're used to. And even 60 decibels, they said, "It's hard to have a conversation over if you had 60 decibels inside." So, I don't think 60 is an unreasonable request and have some sort of monitoring. Odors, you know, I think he has a plan for dealing with that, but again, you know, in the code, just so you know, it talks about agricultural operations, practices, maintenance, and, you know, this again, isn't just a regular ag operation. So, I think that, that someone could be requested to do something over and above what a normal ag would do, because this is an industrial use. The same applies to dust. I think that it is very dusty there, you know, and we live downwind of the odor and the dust. And I think on delivery days, it should be required to mag-chloride the road, or water the road, or have mag-chloride on it previously, and I don't think, I don't think that's unreasonable. And, you know, all these things would prevent neighbors having to complain, because you don't have enforcement on any of these issues, so it sort of pits us against each other. But if we have some basic guidelines out front, I think it would really help the neighborhood, and then, you know, we're not being asked to be the tattletales and enforcers on our neighbor. You know, this is a new thing for us. You know, also water pollution. I think Doug mentioned having a site, because this is right on the, you know, on the Mankas River, having a site there to monitor it, and, you know, hopefully, Mr. Momoney would be amenable to paying that expense, just to make sure we all get along. I just don't think this is onerous or that much to ask, and it would go a long way towards keeping, keeping peace in the neighborhood. You know, I think that also, you know, the owner of the property that I, I used to own has it now for sale, and he told me, he had a showing this last week that went poorly because of this. He did write a letter that should be in your records for the Planning Commission that I read at the last meeting, so I won't do that. But the Realtor who was involved, he did have her contact me, and that, she read, she wrote a letter about the proposed facility, and, which says, "I'm a Realtor out of La Plata in Monizuma County, currently working for the Wells Group. I recently showed a home located, located at 7348 Road 39 in Mankas. My buyer's been interested in this property for several years, even before the current owner purchased it. The rural setting and quiet surroundings set this property apart. Driving down the winding county road brought excitement to my buyer in that they loved the idea of settling in an area where you can breathe fresh air, watch wildlife, and enjoy the outdoors. A few days prior to my buyer's arrival, she read an article in the Durango Herald about a small meat processing plant could start up near Mankas. Upon arrival on August 29th, the buyer and I headed straight to rural Mankas. On the drive over, she mentioned her strong concerns about the slaughterhouse and its close proximity of the property. The buyers do come from a rural area back east, so are familiar with agricultural uses, but have never experienced a business such as this so close to residential properties that could affect their smells, traffic, and noise. They were surprised that county code would allow such a use in this type of rural farming and ranch settling. At the end of the day, she decided that this home and land would not be a good financial investment because of the slaughterhouse going in less than a half-mile away. She and I both felt that this could lower home values in the area and would have a negative impact on the rural ranch setting. 10 animals a week could turn into 20, then 30, or more as demand increases." That, it's a perception, and we realize that. It's a perception, and it's all going to have to do with how this, how this happens if you go ahead and approve it. So, I'm really, really asking you to consider giving us some concrete guidelines that we can all work together on. And I have a copy of the letter from the Realtor, and I have sort of a rough draft of some of the conditions that I proposed, and the decibel standards, if you want those. Could I submit these?
Yes, ma'am.
To whom?
Appreciate your time.
Good job. Anybody else wish to address the Commissioners?
My name's John Patton. I live on Road G, about a mile east of the proposed slaughterhouse on Tom Colbert's old property. Tom Colbert was a friend of mine. We bought some property from him 25 years ago, 23 years ago. Whether I would have bought it with the slaughterhouse down the street, I don't know. It depends. I probably wouldn't. I like Dan Momoney. He's a nice guy. He's very upright, forthright. Surely, we can put a slaughterhouse in this country, which I understand is needed, closer to a commercial area or in a commercial area, instead of a large residential ranch area. I just don't see any logic to this. It needs, we need it in the county? Maybe one thousand cows slaughtered a year, or 2,000. It will totally disrupt our neighborhood. Traffic will be incredibly bad. The roads, as you well know, are gravel coming to this property. I think you need to put it off as the responsible Commissioners, and it needs to be here. I don't deny that, and I think Mr. Momoney would be a great person to build one and run one, but this is not the place for it. Track is difficult to get to at certain times of the year. It's impossible to get to and hard for the county to keep the maintenance up. That's about all I have to say, and I didn't even extend my three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Afternoon.
Robin Strather, 40066, Road G, Mankas. I just want to address a couple of points. One is that, you know, it's interesting that this problem could go away if he would... One is that, you know, it's interesting that this problem could go away if he would relocate that facility 200 yards to the south. As you look at that property from where our neighbors, the Doties, live, there is no doubt that it is going to adversely impact the value of their land. It's, it's a problem that could easily be solved. I don't know that it's something that you think that you can address here today, but there is another thing that I do think that you can address. You've talked about limits on the numbers of animals, and you don't particularly care for that. Let me remind you that the plan that forms the basis for this application does in fact limit the number of animals, specifically the, the septic system that's been engineered for a limited number of animals per week. And I think that it's incumbent upon you to, when you issue this application, require the applicant to live within the confines of the design that he has submitted to you, and the number of animals that are permitted pursuant to the septic plan. Thanks.
Just one note, the septic system is designed for 200 gallons per day, and basically the only thing entering the system is when they wash everything down after processing. None of the guts, for lack of a better word, during the slaughter part, it's all contained in drums, frozen in the freezer, and sold.
If I might respond, the, the septic system, the engineering plan does specify, I believe, 15 animals a week. And they're saying that it's designed for that. You might double check me, but I think that's exactly what the plan says.
Do you think on the septic, septic permit has had a number of animal processes per week?
I believe it does.
Oh, okay. We'll check that.
Can you, I, I've never heard of a system being designed for-
It's, it's based off 200 gallons per day. There is some narrative in there as far as 15 animals per week. That exceeds the 10 animals per week. I could look, I, I don't know the exact figures, but it's based off 200 gallons per day, which is how a septic system is designed.
What, what else do you have in there that's gonna use water, but whatever gets you to 200 gallons a day? That's a lot of, that's a lot of water.
The system, the, the animal count comes down to, we had to specify for the designer. So it's a design system, Craig Wickstrom was the design engineer for the system. The system itself, if you were to operate this with a residential system, is overdesigned even for that. So in other words, it's much greater than, the design is much greater than even the numbers show. The 15 animals was really calculated, a calculation that they used to determine the bio amount. So, the, the technology of this particular system has to be able to digest what goes in. There's not, there's one restroom in the facility that services there, so the biomass that's going in, that would support the, the digesting creatures, bacteria, basically can be overpowered by a certain amount of blood. So, we had to pick a number in order to come up with an amount, and it wasn't a limitation, it was a limitation on whether or not we would use aeration. The other way that this system could process more animals, if it, if it needed to, was that you could have added an aerator that adds oxygen, that helps the breakdown of the blood. So the system was designed based on the manufacturer's estimates of washdown water, and the amount of blood contaminant that would be going into the system over that period of time, and that was designed basically so that the tank was sized without aeration. My fear of using aeration is if the power goes out, or you have some other type of problem, then you have, then you don't know what's going on. So the system was sized to not require aeration for 15 animals a day, which was a 50% safety factor over what we were going to do. The conversion to gallons of water was based on the manufacturer's recommendation of how much water would be used over that period of time. So, it's kind of a convoluted way to get to it, but the, the, we won't use anywhere close to that amount of water, it's really the sizing for aeration or not.
So, 15 animals a day, times 365?
A week.
That's a week?
A week.
Because you said a day, okay.
I'm sorry, I may have missed, may have missed. We, we sized everything around what our plan was, which was 10 animals per week for 50 weeks of operation, that's the 500 animals that you hear going through. When we designed the septic system, we had to kind of go backwards from what we planned to operate, build on some safety factor, and then size the system.
Because that would be 750, 50 weeks of 15 animals a day.
Yeah, that's, there's a 50, we, I requested a 50% safety factor on the septic system over and above what we had, so-
So you're well within your-
Yes, yes. And, and with aeration, and with, if you, if you added aeration, which is a common practice in septic systems, the system itself is, is, from a size wise, is oversized. It's, it's, so the, so the concept of the size of the system relation to the, to that was basically based on a 50% safety factor over how we were designing to operate. So, all told, if you look at the amount of water that's used, it's the other side of the water issue, that's, we use very little water. If you, if you take that, even at 50 gallons per animal, over the 500 animals, it's, it's, you know, basically around a month's use of domestic water.
As far as the downlight, do you have any issues with taking care of the downlighting? Instead of the lights that they shine downward?
Yeah, I, I met with a group of the neighbors, and we walked around, the, the, the downlighting, there is really no exterior lighting now. The building that we enclosed, as we mentioned in the permit, the building, I, I did indeed build the building, but there was an open section. We moved the equipment storage to the open section. The open section had the lights in it. When we enclosed that section, all the lights basically went interior. So we walked around the, the exterior facility, I showed the neighbors where the lights were. In later conversations, the concerns really weren't coming from that location. On the property is a residence of our ranch manager, and it's the porch lights of the ranch manager that were the offending lights. So I've talked with the ranch manager and their family, and explained that the, the lights were, where the lights were, and the amount of time that they were on, and the direction of them, if they could adjust that, and they, they assured me that they would do that. But it was not this facility, it was the, the home, home, yes.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this issue?
MB McAfee, 22277, County Road 20. I was at the P and Z meeting, and a lot of the people that are here now were at that meeting. I think that Mrs. Stabler, Staber really summarized the comments very well. I think this is an opportunity for you as commissioners to take a leadership role, show that you've listened to the community, show that you want to do something about improving, tweaking, if you will, our land use code, and putting some conditions on that I think maybe have already been talked about with the neighbors and Mr. Momoney. I, I think this is an opportunity to actually bridge something that feels divisive, and like there's anonymity, whereas I, I think this is something that can be overcome. If you make a unanimous decision, and you're going to do this blanket statement like the P and Z did, except for Mr. Momoney's voluntary 500 head a week-
A year.
A year, I'm sorry, 500 head a year. I, I think this is an opportunity to really listen to the neighbors, and actually make some decisions based on some of the things that are brought to your attention, that might be really worth a little bit further consideration. For instance, down the road, if this becomes a very successful operation, Mr. Momoney is a businessman, he's used to investing in something, watching it grow, and adding to it if it seems successful, that's how businessmen do things, you all know that, because you're all businessmen. So, in the future, how is this going to look? Is this area going to be big enough for a twice the size of what he wants to do now? I mean, I just think it's worthwhile for some conversation, and I'm really very nervous that you're going to suddenly, not suddenly, but without much thought, that I will be able to see, unless you've had a lot of conversation among yourselves, which I expect you have, this is your opportunity to show that you've actually been listening, and there are some things that you think should really be considered for our land use code.
I'm Felicity Brennan, 30330, and 3084, County Road G. I'm the property next to the Doties and directly across from Mr. Momoney's property. In fact, my property is 500 feet from the proposed facility.
Were you noticed in the-
Yes, I was. I was the only one noticed. I just want to let you know a little bit about me. I was on the honor board, Community Foundation of Cortez. I was on the Mankas Chamber of Commerce Board. I was the vice president of the Mankas Water Conservancy Board. And I was the director of the Mankas River Watership Planning and Restoration Process, planning process that took place here some years ago. I care deeply about agriculture, about the Mankas Valley, and about our water, and about our neighborhood. We ran a planning process in the Mankas Valley that was stakeholder driven, and Dick Perry was part of that when he owned that ranch, and Mace Verity, and a lot of the ranch holders, the Weavers, the Robins. We came to a lot of collaborative results that expressed best practices, and I raised close to $1 million in grant funding from around the state and nationally for ranchers in the Mankas Valley. Why am I telling you all of this? Because as I stand here today before you, it may look as if we don't have a lot in common, you and I, but we do. I know you're not wearing hood bearings. I am, but we have a lot in common, and that specifically is that we care very deeply about the land, about successful agriculture businesses, and about everybody who lives within Montezuma County. I am here to propose that Mr. Momoney, who has bought several ranches in the area, and owns up to 1,500 acres, re-site this facility. It is in literally my site view from my living room. I trust Mr. Momoney will run a tight ship. He's an engineer, he's a kind man, he came and looked at, and walked to my property with me and a group of us. He gave us a site tour, I think it's a good plan, but I don't think it belongs in my living room. And I don't think any of you would want it in your living room, mitigation or not. And the county code specifically says that neighbors' property values will be protected. And you heard from Sarah Staber, already a buyer walked away, given that there was going to be this facility. I don't deny Mr. Momoney this facility, I don't deny him making a profit, I don't deny him any of that, I think we do need this. But I don't think it belongs where he has proposed it. And I think you would be wise to heed MB's words, and ask him, work with him, let's all work together to re-site it. Heck, I'll write a grant for $500,000 so he doesn't lose any money, if he could re-site it somewhere where it's not going to produce adverse impacts to our property rights, and property values, and to our visuals. So, that is my request of you today. Please delay this process, let's talk to him, let's look at all of his other landholdings, let's re-site this so that it can grow when the need exists, which it's gonna meet, it's gonna exist in week two probably of this up and running. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak to this?
My name is Paul Bowman, I own property at 5892 County Road 38, just downstream from Mr. Momoney, is that correct pronunciation? I have no quarrels with Mr. Momoney. I believe his facility is well thought out. I don't believe that the location he has chosen is thought out at all. This is a precedent-setting situation, and none of you have a slaughterhouse in your backyard. Thank you.
Didn't you give up your three minutes?
I want to be, I want to be correct. My name is Ann Patton, I live at 39780, Road G, perhaps a mile and a half from Don, uh, Dan, sorry, Dan's, proposed slaughterhouse. It won't affect me. I'm around the curve, I'm not on the road, I like steak, but I do think that holding him to this original proposal is something you all should consider completely. And I think that Dan will be back again, and Dan will want more. I don't blame Dan, he's an American. I would ask Larry Don that you recuse yourself, because you've already said that you are for this project and its enlargement, and you did this without listening to any public comment. So I ask that you not vote on this.
And I deny your, your ask.
Why?
I will vote.
Why?
Well, you go to where you got there.
Is there anybody else wish to speak to this? Okay, we'll close this section of the public, public hearing of this, the public comments section of the public hearing. Okay, Commissioner, do you have any other thoughts?
Actually, I do, I have one more question for the planning department. So, he has hit every component within his application, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, what I hate to see is that we have standards, we develop them, and we have people coming into our community to put up a new business, and then we start moving the target. Well, you can't hit a target if you don't have a place to go to, so, Mr. Momoney, if you've hit all those, thank you, I appreciate that. The only thing that I am, would ask is, if you don't have an issue with the lights, that's a very simple deal, if you could take care of that. The septic system is already one of the concerns, which is way overdesigned. When people talk about property value, you know, that has, that's something that has to be weighted and proven. I don't think you can say because something pops up, it's gonna decrease your value. So that, that, that's, that's a concern to me, but we are here, our planning commission hears everything that goes in front of them, they are supposed to take the mitigation efforts to make sure that everything is done before it ever gets to us as a commission. When it gets to us, then we need to make a, we need to make a ruling on this. So, just so that you understand, time is also money for Mr. Momoney, and we can't just continually wait. If there are things in the land use code that you don't like, I, I would like to see a group come forward and say, "Look, here are some things that we want changed," not at the last minute of the last day, that we have to make a decision based on what's in our land use code. That's all I have, sir.
Well, for every action, there's a reaction. We already have another processing plant in, in this county that doesn't have a head count on it. He is also not USDA approved, at a cost to having your beef USDA approved, and maybe, he can answer this, I don't know if it's $600 or $800 a head? Am, am I correct on that number? Can somebody give me the-
The hard part is, is it's really what people charge. In other words, that's the, there's a cost to it, because you have to pay for the inspector. The way that we're set up to operate, and the reason that it's designed this way is to be a batch process, so we designed it to mitigate the fact that we really should only require USDA inspector out one day a week. They come out on one day, they do all of their inspections- They come out on one day, they do all of their inspections, and then they move on. So that's the reason for the design of the process, and that's why I was talking about the way we intend to operate. It's not a typical, USDA inspector has to be on process for all of the critical operations and do their inspections to maintain your, your inspection. If you run a continuous operation, then you're required to have at least one inspector there full-time. And that's where they get those, some of those numbers. So we've yet to see what that cost is, but we believe that we've mitigated the cost by, by holding it to the one day a week.
The reason I bring that up is because I believe at Sunnyside, it's either $600 or $800 a head. So what you're going to have is you're going to have the, the concern about having this thing explode. You're going to have ranchers that will, they won't go to his facility. They'll go to the other facility because they don't have that extra $600 or $800 a head fee on them. I do not see this blowing out of proportion. I do see the more stipulations that would be put on his would actually affect the other slaughterhouse, because then people would, would migrate to the other slaughterhouse the more restrictions. And I think that our land use code is clear. It's, and I have listened. I have studied. I didn't hear anybody talk about what the reaction would be from if something was put on this one to the other slaughterhouse. And so I would move that we approve this application without the 500 head. And then if he exceeds the threshold, then he would come back before the Board of Commissioners and go through a different permit. That was a motion.
So in your motion, you said to remove the, his voluntary 500 head, your restriction?
I do, and first of all, who's going to count the 500 head? Number two. And it has nothing to do with if he's agreeable or not. I'm looking at the, down the road, what it is going to do by changing our land use code with a stipulation like that. That we already have a packing plant that doesn't have that number.
That's true.
And who came up with 500? Why not 400? She said 10 a week. That's, that's 520. So why, why have a number? Anytime we, as commissioners, we start limiting what we say the business can do, then they'll go to another place as far as...
Can I ask a clarification of something you, I understood you to say? Did you say part of it is if he exceeds 500, he needs to come back to have his use permit?
No. I believe it's, is it a thousand a head for a feedlot? For a feedlot, if it's 1,000 a head, then you have to come back and get a industrial permit.
A thousand head per what?
A feedlot in the land use code is actually a feedlot, not a meat processing facility. And that would be 1,000 animals or more contained within one major feedlot. That's an industrial agribusiness.
Is that annually?
Excuse me?
Is that annually? I think is the question. I think, is that annually?
I under, I would interpret it as at a time.
Just, just at a time, okay.
But, I mean, it doesn't stay, say that any more than that. That's just my interpretation, is that if you have 1,000 or more in your facility, not at a time.
I don't like having the restriction of 500 either, and I said that right in the beginning. I think if you have a business plan, and it, down the road, it's going to expand, you know you have to come back in because you're going to, you know, get outside of those standards.
You'll get outside the threshold standards of traffic.
Then you know that.
And all the road counts, and all of that will come into play. But the way, before, before we take, I want a little more discussion on this before we take action on Commissioner Sukla's motion. I, I would, it would behoove me for anybody to drive by Mr. Momini's place and drive past his driveway going down that road, and look at his place and know that, and I, I guess I like the way you use the word slaughterhouse. I think it adds a little bit of drama and conviction to the, to the deal. We've got, we've got, I guess you want to call that, we've got Bain's Custom Pack right out here, almost within the city limits of Cortez, and it's a slaughterhouse. And it's been there for 40 or 50 years, and it's not impacted any of their neighbors. None of the property values there in that neighborhood have been impacted by that. It's been a standalone business for years and years and years. So, so what? If you drove by Mr. Momini's place and you looked at his building there, nobody on that road is going to know that that's a processing plant or a slaughterhouse. You're going to drive by that, and you're going to see a big metal building there with, with nothing to indicate. You can't see the animals. You can't see inside the, nobody's going to know that, okay?
Cows moo.
You like ranch life, or do you not like ranch life? Or do you like steak or not like steak? Okay. I don't want to get into a debate with you, ma'am, but I'm just saying, this... Thank you. I think Mr. Momini has followed all of the bullet points that we have expected him to meet. He's exceeded the thresholds of what we've asked him to do. I don't think this is going to impact your neighborhood like you are so drastically saying this is going to impact your neighborhood. I just don't see that happening. And I, you've already had your time to comment. Thank you, Mr. Doty. It's my turn to comment. So back to, we have a motion on the floor.
I, I think the motion should be made as a motion, not a bunch of statements and then saying, "And that's my motion." I did not hear a formal motion.
Well, maybe you should. It was a proper motion.
I didn't hear it.
I did.
I'll, I'll second the motion with removing the restriction of 500. I don't think it should be restricted at all.
It's been moved and seconded to grant Mr. Momini his special use permit application on a USDAA processing facility located at 6761, Road 39, Mankas, Colorado, with no restriction on numbers of cattle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll now close this public hearing.